Sid Clark at this time, I'd like to call the council meeting for order. We have a call. In case we'll be doing by Mr. Jones and the place of leaves by Mr. Jackson.
As a father, we thank you so much for today. For just your presence in our lives. You probably ask how did you fill this place, fill our hearts with your whole spirit, give us the wisdom to lead, guide, and represent for this city in a way that best before how it's in the name of Jesus that you pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a seat. The late thing in order is the definition and presentation of Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Y'all don't have worries on a presentation myself. But I have Ms. Davis and Mr. Taylor, please come up and join me, please. For those of y'all who may or may not be familiar, on occasion, based on a recommendation, usually from the manager, but not exclusively, mayor and council take a special time to honor and recognize employees who do an outstanding job. And Ms. Renee Davis and Mr. Bob Taylor are with me tonight, and they are the recipients of this award that we give out periodically. Why they're up here, I'll show you in right now. Go ahead. For those of y'all may be familiar, we recently installed a splash pad out at Creekwood Park, and at that park, we wound up having some problems with some of the equipment out there. These are the water cannons, I think they call them. And it was broken, we weren't sure what had to be done. We had contacted the contractor to install them, and there were some other issues, they weren't able to help. We had to check and see. So we were taking a look at an estimated cost of around $10,000 plus to go in and repair them. Ms. Davis, in her capacity as the facilities manager, and Bob, in his capacity as the vehicle maintenance manager, got together and determined that with some discussion and skill, they put together and were able to fabricate and repair each of the cannons, install them, so that they're actually in better condition than what they originally were installed in. So consequently, that saved the city, and of course, the taxpayers and everything, around $10,000 plus. Being a monetary monster of a manager, I said, yes, indeed, that's exactly what we're interested in. So that is the purpose on why they are recognized, or part of the purpose on why they're recognized. Possibly, from council's standpoint, I think from my standpoint, a bigger, more important factor is the fact that these two employees are in two different departments. And they came together on their own, realized there was an issue that needed to be addressed. They didn't have to be told, they didn't have to go back and be pushed, there wasn't any whining or crying. A problem came up, and typical on what we have with all our employees, as far as council and I are concerned. They all volunteer, work together on their own to provide the best product for the citizens and visitors to the city of Perry. Now, what we'd also like to do, and we would've done the same thing for Ms. Davis, except she hasn't been here long enough, is to give you an idea of some other type of cooperations that you can have between departments. And this mostly focuses on Bob, but it's not exclusive to his organization. Go ahead. This is an example of some items that had to be done. The top left-hand corner, there is a rack, you know, for one of the mowers that we had done. You have other type of racks and covers that were fabricated, instead of having to go out and construct them on our own. Go ahead. This is one of the real benefits we had. We had an issue relative to stages set up for the Food Truck Friday and number of the other events. We have larger stages, which originally were designed for the Perry Music Festival. However, they are much more timely to have to set up and everything. So Bob came up, all using basically existing materials, a few items he had to go in and purchase, and put together this portable stage. So you can see, has it set up on the courthouse grounds for one of the events, and then when it's not in use, how it folds up and is transportable and very easy to use. Go ahead. This is another example on some of the work that's been done. Instead of contracting some of these things out, for example, for the leaf cover, if we went to the manufacturer on that, that would probably be around $10,000, $10,500, something like that. That was constructed by Bob and his people at no cost to us, other than the materials. And you see some of the other improvements or items that have been used. Go ahead. This is an example, a request from the police department. They came up with the older vehicle, and they said they'd like to have a paddy wagon for their PR events, and so, as far as I know, it's not actually down, well, it's not streetworthy, I know that, so at least the bar is not using it. But it's a good advertising tool for police going around a different type of social events and everything. And once again, costs us little or nothing. And then one of the other advantages too, a lot of times, you don't see these type of things, but one of the things that makes a lot of our special events very popular and successful are the various props that are set up for them. So these are examples of some of the things that have been done by Bob's shop and everything. You see some of the upper parts there with Bob the Buzzard and the Buzzard Drop, from our Buzzard Drop. The Oktoberfest decorating, which we got information from our Corfert Residence Center, about how it's actually done in Bavaria. For those who may have had the opportunity to see our soapbox derby, is that what we called it? You know, that's one of the city vehicles. As you can see, that was much more successful than Fire's vehicle, but we'll leave that. And some of the other prop lines. Yeah. Don't send a fireman to do a vehicle maintenance. But those are just some of the examples, you know, that, why we're very proud of our employees, and in this particular case, for Bob and for Rena. But that cooperation and everything is very beneficial, both for us internally, as our family, so to speak, but even more so particularly for you all as residents of the city of Perry and the surrounding areas. So, on behalf of mayor and council, I am pleased to give this payment to you and to you. For those of you who want to know how much it is, it's a $1,000 piece. We have not taken the taxes out, but the IRS. But that is, that is part of council's process about when they're actually documented savings or something that really benefit the city, not just nice-looking person or whatever the case may be, and council wants to go back and recognize them. So, I think on behalf of mayor and council, there's, sorry, there is no mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. You know, council can make some comments, but I just want to thank you all very much.
And next item is that Mr. Smith's gonna introduce our direct beliefs to...
Mr. Swan, will you join me up here? And we expect the same type of performance from you, by the way. Mayor Pro Tem and council, general public, I'm pleased to introduce tonight Mr. Cedric Swan, RDU Director of Leisure Services. Mr. Swan comes to us from the city of Albany, where he was a head of four or five different divisions, including events, centers, aquatics, and health and wellness. Prior to that, he worked with Macon, Bid County. He also worked with Andrew College in Cuthbert. Mr. Swan received his bachelor's degree from Georgia Southwestern and Americas. He also has a master's of public administration, very well-educated, vast array of experience, and possibly most importantly, Mr. Swan is a Perry native. Mr. Swan is a graduate of Perry High School, and he claims this is his dream job to be back to serve his community he grew up in. So very pleased to have Mr. Swan on board. Mr. Swan does live here in the city of Perry, with his wife and four children. Is there anything else you'd say, Mr. Swan?
Just excited, living the dream, and looking forward to future.
Thank you.
Like to welcome to Perry. Do we have any community partner to update? Do we have any city with citizen with input? If we had reviewed the minutes, I need to have a motion.
So what?
Second.
Let's move the second that we received and accept the minute with correction. All in favor, let it be by word, aye. I have the motion to carry. Open this. The ordinance, second reading and adoption. The second reading of the ordinance, the annex, 49.43 acres, a property located on Moody Road, portion of Woodrow Subdivision. Types map number zero, PO 490, zero five six, zero zero. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. This is second reading of a request to de-annex this property that's shown on the screen. It's an undeveloped piece of property adjacent to city limits at the bottom of that property. Otherwise, it is surrounded by properties that are in house and county. After looking at the proposed development plan for this, the side, the streets would meander in and out of the city limits, and this is in an area that we would not be providing services for, so we recommend that it be de-annexed. The House and County Board of Commissioners have agreed to that as well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman, any other question? Need a, with Gilmore?
Yes.
Public, does the public have any question? Any asks? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion that we de-annex it, so the second.
Had we moved the second that we de-annex this portion of property, I need a part board. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to carry. Thank you. And the open this, I have mine. Councilmember, anyone y'all have? Ms. Wood?
No.
Ms. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Ms. Smith?
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm moving this for the night. It's a matter of void from all the field, website, and all the states, pre-council meeting. Approve or exclude the Houston County campsite revision of tree art. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. This is, as we discussed last night, a request to exclude a number of trees on an expansion of an industrial site here in the city. They will be putting in the required street trees and trees associated with the parking areas, but they will fall short of needing the tree credits. But as an industrial site, we recommend your approval.
That'd be a vote.
So the second.
Had moved the second that we received this, as Mr. Wood had read it, all in favor, let it be by word, aye. I have the motion to carry. Thank you. Resolution, introduce the adoption. Resolution, I mean, the city of Perry, fee schedule, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmembers, you have this resolution in your packet. It makes an adjustment to the alcoholic beverage license because of the cap. It includes your approval for the solid waste charges, backflow preventer, and then also will add the Houston County value rate of $90. Remember, we have talked about that for calculated construction at your work session, and we recommend to you to adopt.
Had it time, county, you entertain a vote.
So the second.
Had moved the second that we received this fee schedule, all in favor, let it be by word, aye. I have the motion to carry. Resolution, authorize the increase in the... Excuse me. Resolution declared on certain vehicle equipment surplus. Ms. King.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. King, council, members, some information that you have before you in your board pack is Mr. Six's vehicles and equipment that Mr. Taylor has reviewed and recommended for could be declared a surplus for disposal by either sell or salvage due to the condition of the vehicles and equipment. So we're asking that if you declare these as surplus.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a vote. Motion.
So the second.
Had we moved the second that we received this in equipment surplus. Any question? All in favor, let it be by word, aye. I have the motion to carry. Thank you. The resolution authorize an increase in the fee card limit. Ms. King.
Yes, sir. Again, thank you. The information I have before you is with revision of our purchasing card policy, a couple council meetings before, the bank has offered, has requested us update our information, wanting to include a letter of authorization, verification that you are authorizing city manager and director of administration to apply for the additional cards with the total debt limit of $110,000 for all the cards and any additional there are that you are aware, that we more come about, that we can make those requests and have those cards issued as well, as well as sign a resolution, again, authorizing us to do so as well.
At this time, I entertain a motion.
So the second.
Had been moved the second that we received this fee card limit, all in favor, let it be by word, aye. I have the motion to carry. Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you, sir.
For what it be, it's hit number 2020, national for Perry Arts Center, window tanning at the weather.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council. This was a bid solicitation to install window tanning at the Perry Arts Center. We followed all of our standard practices in contacting vendors and hosting this bid. We received one responsive bid, that was from Tent Pro, and it was in the amount of $8,280 to install that tanning, and it would be staff's recommendation that we would award this bid to Tent Pro.
Next time, may I entertain a motion?
So the second.
Had we moved the second that we entertained this bid, all in favor, let it be by word, aye. I have the motion to carry. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, sir.
The request to pursue FPR 2020 private communication grant to obtain up to $5,000 in grant funds for the art related to the city event. Ms. Turb.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council. I'm coming for you this evening to request permission to pursue the fiscal year 2020 Fiverr Communities Grant. That was brought to my attention by our partners at the Perry Area CBD. This grant would provide us with opportunities to pursue up to $5,000 in grant funding for art-related events. There are two events in 2020 that I would like to try to apply for. Both of these events do already have budget approved, and so if we were to be awarded these grants, there would be no additional funds requested, and then if we were not to be awarded these grants, we would not have any money lost.
Councilmember, any other question? If not, we entertain a motion.
So the second.
Had we moved the second that we received and obtained this opportunity to receive the grant. All in favor, let it be by aye.
Aye. Thank you. I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Don't come to play. I'll do my best.
Thank you, Ms. Turb. A special event application. The Perry Ministerial Association is hosting a stoned downtown concert on Sunday, December the first through from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Mr. Mansell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. My name is Father Nicholas Mansell. I'm the pastor emeritus of St. Patrick's Catholic Church, and I'm here in the capacity as not only a member of the Perry Ministerial Association, but also the event coordinator for Christmas at the Square, which has been sponsored by PMA for more than 25 years. We use Carroll Street near, in front of the old courthouse, and I have submitted the application for, to have the event, and I've received approval from the courthouse to use the grounds. So I'm here to petition for permission to do this.
Councilmember, any other question? If not, I entertain a vote.
Have we moved to be accepted application?
Second.
Have we moved the second that we accept the application from Mr. Mansell? All in favor, let it be by word, aye. I have the motion to carry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The city of Perry is hosting their Perry Music Festival on Saturday, September 14th, from 4:00 PM until 7:00 PM. Ms. Turb.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council. The city of Perry will be celebrating the 10th anniversary of the Perry Music Festival. This free event is held annually at Rotary Centennial Park, and it promotes unity in the community through the celebration of local and regional musical talent of various genres. What we are requesting tonight is permission to hold the event on public property at Rotary Centennial Park on Saturday, September 14th. The event would take place from 4:00 PM through 11:00 PM. The time of the road closures would be approximately 1:00 PM through 12:00 AM, and this road closure would affect Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. In addition, we are requesting the normal support for this event from public works, police, and fire as directed by the chiefs.
Any councilmember, Mr. Gilmore, you have a thing?
Sure.
Can I entertain a motion?
Also the move, second.
Had we moved the second that we received and accepted, what Ms. Turb have to apply to us, all in favor, let it be by word, aye.
Aye.
I have the motion to carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Perry Ava Chamber Company is hosting a downtown event for leisure of Georgia on Thursday, September 12th, 2019, from 4:30 PM until 8:00 PM. Ms. Meyer?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem and council. The Perry Area Chamber of Commerce is hosting Leadership Georgia. They'll be in town from the 11th through the 13th. However, they will be holding a private exclusive event on Carroll Street on September 12th. They are requesting street closures from 2:00 to 8:00 PM or until the event has completely been cleaned up by us as well. The street closures are from Carroll Street between Journey again and Washington, Ball Street between Commerce and Main.
At this time, county, entertain a motion.
So the second.
Had we moved the second that we accepted, as the mayor said, for the downtown leadership, all in favor, let it be by word, aye.
Aye.
I have the motion to carry. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The Halo Group is hosting, thank you. Perry Ava Chamber Company is hosting a business battlefield on Thursday, October 17th, from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM. Ms. John?
Yes, I was here to present the, this is the third annual Business Battlefield that we've done. Basically, it is a team-building networking event. It's like an adult field day. And the first year we had it, we held it at Heritage Park, so we are requesting use of that park premises again. I believe y'all have the application or a summary of it.
Thank you. Committee, a motion at this time.
So the second.
Had we moved the second that we received that...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Yes, sir.
Give me one caveat with that.
Yes, sir.
Is that we will work with you to relocate if you can't hold the event because of construction.
Yes, sir.
Remember, we had talked about that. Because Heritage Park is probably going to be having construction going on. The new park, Old Cherokee Pines, may have construction as well, so, but we'll get with you in time.
We'll work together to make that work out of there, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. With all that correction, all in favor, let it be by word, aye. I have the motion to carry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. John. The Halo Group is hosting, the Halo Group Truck Tour on Saturday, September 14th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Ms. Kurt?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. We wanted to share this information with you, and I think, I hope you all received your packets with those important detailed information. We hope to hold this event in Perry on September 21st. Actually, since then, since discussing some of the logistics with Major Phelps, and strategizing what our initial proposal was, we had some modifications to that. So what we wanted to do was ask for the time to be reflected differently from the 10:00 AM start time, because the setup would really begin about 8:30, and the event would be closed down and cleaned up by 4:30. We are seeking to use a fire truck from city of Perry for the pool rent, as well as the display for the vintage fire truck to be displayed on the courthouse property. The way that we have it set up would be that we would want to utilize the Main Street portion of, well, this portion of Main Street in front, directly in front of the New Perry Hotel. And with that, we'd have two fire trucks. We've already spoken with Sergeant, Chief Stoner at Houston County, and we have use of their truck for the event. And then we also have, we need the second truck, and so we would request that we would be able to use one of the trucks for Perry, possibly for that as well. And then, we would have 25 teams pulling the Perry trucks from Perry businesses and organizations. We'd have 25 teams with outsiders, that's describing the event, pulling the Houston County truck, for the fastest pull time from the Perry team, finally competing against the fastest pull time for the Houston County team. Then, it's a fun, friendly, competitive event where we're trying to unite Houston County, but also kind of show the significance of the pride we have in Perry, being that we have the only historic downtown in Perry, and we have the main historic building being the New Perry Hotel, which the event is centered on. We have been offered to use grounds in Houston County, but we really wanted to focus on the use of the surrounding property around New Perry Hotel to create the energy and enthusiasm and the unity of the community's support for our endeavors that we've been tirelessly working on for the success of renovating this beautiful building and what it's going to be in the future for generations to come. So this would be the first major fundraiser, and if it is a success, we would hope it would be annual. With this request, we would also be asking for road closures, not just the Main Street portion from Ball Street to Journey again, but also the map display that we would be part of the recommendation of Major Phelps, blocking from Main Street to Carroll Street, and then also blocking from Main Street to barricading button, Main Street to Carroll Street on Journey again. So those two stretch, forming the U kind of in front of the hotel. So if you look at the map, you'd see that the viewing audience would be on the New Perry Hotel, the family kids zone, which is free to the whole community, would be in the back of the hotel. We would have traffic still coming down from Main Street, being able to turn down and go down Ball Street, as well as come down Main Street and turn down and go through down to Journey again Street. There would still be Carroll Street open to the public and parking. We also would be asking for the use of the parking space, the public parking space, next to the theater, right there on the corner of Ball and Main Street, yeah, Ball Street and Main Street, as well as the use of the courthouse parking lot to display the four trucks that we have already arranged with, the Champ Truck, Safe Zone Truck, the Warner Robbins possibly ladder truck, and then hopefully, if considered, the vintage fire truck from Perry. We do have a backup truck if Perry is not able to allow us the use of the fire truck to pull for the event, which would be primarily in the timeline I showed you. There would be two pull divisions, 10:30 to about 12:00, and then an intermission for a short period, and then the second pull time would begin another hour and a half stretch after that. The trucks would be released after that, so that we could do the award and presentations for the ceremonies. So we're essentially asking for the road closure in that U shape portion of the building. We understand the expense that we would be paying for the use of the officers or, you know, the personnel required for that. We also understand the use of, the need for the insurance. I did propose to my board of directors to come tonight prepared to provide the insurance copies, but they wanted to guarantee that we would have approval from you first before we went through the specifications of paying for that insurance for this special event. We have liability insurance for our hotel, and of course, for our programming services. We wanted to be insured that this event would be... insured that this event would be held here before we went and did pay that fee to have Perry tied into what the stipulations are for the actual event, special event being held here. We're hoping that we can gain your support, and that even possibly after hearing some of the things that we have at that neat stage, I was actually praying over stage usage and talking to the churches and making contact with that, so I would even potentially throw in the use of the stage to be set up here as well. So it was just a little extra. So it's just road closures. It's a fun event that we know that would be, you know, generating a lot of traffic and a lot of awareness to what we're trying to do for the building and make it a really fun community event for the, for all of our patrons around Houston County and Middle Georgia as well. We already have about twenty-two teams registered to participate, and I haven't even promoted the organ, the event yet because I'm waiting for our website page and everything to be developed with this approval potentially being the launching part of where the location would be held. And I'm available for any questions that be happening.
You, you mentioned use of the courthouse parking lot. We don't have any control over that.
Okay, so I need to ask them if we can display a parking lot for that then.
Correct, Mr. Gilmore.
Yes. Mr. Gilmore, you have a thing to say.
That would be contingency, then I would exclude that then, and that was just for, because we're really trying to generate the awareness of all the different agencies and different services available, and so we wanted to really tie it in as a county-wide event with kind of Perry being the host of the event. That's why we wanted to use the Perry fire truck and then the Houston County overall for all the other cities in Houston County.
I think I asked who to contact to...
Well, I can figure that out, but that's not, that's not a deal breaker for the organization, the event overall. That's just a extra bonus for it.
We're going to hear from Mr. Gilmore at this time.
Per council policy, my recommendation would be council says, okay, on the road closures, no for the fire truck and no for the stage, because your position is that you do not provide those items unless they are designated partners that you have previously done. For example, the chamber is a designated partner. You may remember, we've had other groups come in for use of the stage, you, you have denied them.
Right.
And because everybody's to be, certainly wish you the best, but because you're raising money, you can't use the city fire truck.
Okay. That was gonna be my question was if we, what would it take to become a community partner or be a partner and that kind of thing? If we wanted to be an annual event in the future, what steps would I take for that? But I can follow up at a later time for that.
You can always make an application.
All right. Thank you.
Do we have a vote?
Yes, for the street voters.
At this time, I entertain the motion.
That would move that we approve the street voters.
So moved.
Has it been moved the second that we approved your free closing for you? All in favor, let it be by our hands. Our hands and the motion is carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Perry.
You will. Our little business or supplement agenda, approve of agreement between the Board of Commission for Houston County and the City of Perry related to a temporary location from municipal court operation. Ms. Gilmore.
Mr. Mayor Protem, council members, we've had some issues, well, there were issues before, and they continued with the relocation of the municipal court over using this room. We have talked with the Houston County Board of Commissioners and the sheriff and the judges. They are graciously willing to allow the city municipal court to meet over and use one of their courtrooms in Houston County courthouse over on Perry Parkway. However, they are requesting that a formal request be made and a memorandum of understanding be executed by you. You all have copies in that in your packet. The administration would recommend to you to approve proceeding with the formal request and the memorandum of understanding subject to the city attorney, okay, you agree?
Thank you. At this time, I entertain the motion that we approved, Ms. Gilmore just talked about for the commissioner.
Second.
Has it been moved the second that we received and obtained this agreement between the Board of Commission and Houston County, the City of Perry? All in favor, let it be by our hands. Our hands and the motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Gilmore. At this time, what may I add? Counsel, counsel. Mr. Mountgraze. Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I want to inform the city council, the public, and the city employees that I have decided at this time not to run again for the council seat. I came here to Perry thirty-five years ago. It's been a great place to live. Most of that thirty-five years I've been involved either in an appointed position or elected position. First, I was a Perry Beautification Commission for several years, then ten years on the Downtown Development Authority, two of those as chairman, and I will complete ten years. At the end of this year, I will sit in council. My plate's full. I'm still running a business full-time, and we're going to welcome two more little ones to the family first of the year. So that's my priority right now. I appreciate the citizens for putting their trust in me past few years. City staff, you've been great to work with, so is council, and I'm proud of the things we've accomplished with that time. I am not leaving. I plan on being a part of Perry for a long time to come. Thank you.
Councilmember, you all have a thing something to, Mr. Lee, at this time.
I would like to say we appreciate all the work he's done over these years. Enjoyed being with him and working with him. I'd say a goal for me to understand.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gilmore.
Just say as someone who's born thirty-five years ago, that I'm proud that my time in Perry, my beginning in Perry, coincided with Councilman Jackson, and that I'm proud to serve him and that I...
Mountgraze.
I'm proud of you. You made some tough decisions, and I think the ones that you made were right for the whole city, not just part of the city, and I hate to see you go.
Yes, sir. Mr. Protem, I'd like to say to you, we might have enjoyed working with you, and I know that like Mr. Mountgraze said, you make some decisions. Sometimes we make decisions that people don't like, but I appreciate your, your time, and I thank you so much for you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Gilmore. You want to say something?
No, we're, I've got some positive things. I'm sorry, a little hesitant. I, I think, I think as the council members have stated, from, at least speaking from the staff standpoint and everything, Mr. Jackson has been a complete delight to deal with. He has done a very good job balancing the needs of his district with the needs of the city as a whole, and that is not an easy task to do. In addition to that, Mr. Jackson has been very proactive and supportive of a number of initiatives that have been presented from citizens, from staff, or from council to improve the Perry community, make it a much better place to live. And so, thank you very much for that.
Mr. Smith, you like to say something?
Sure. I've been with the city for about five years now. Mr. Jackson has always been very, very supportive of our endeavors at the staff level, always been available, been present, which is very important. You know, it's good to have your leadership there, engaged in what you're working on on a day-to-day basis. Mr. Jackson has certainly done that. I'll miss getting the pothole texts. You know, that's the kind of guy that he is, you know, attention to detail. He wants the city to look the best it could possibly look. He wants the city to operate the best it possibly can. And, you know, we'll appreciate what you've done for us.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We appreciate it.
See, one of those, you know, Robert had talked about the potholes and everything, but I also want to commend Councilmember Jackson. When you go around and take a look at downtown and the city hall and the plantings and the baskets and all that type of stuff, that is Mr. Jackson's legacy to the city. He constantly worked and pushed that. He supported that. He worked in financing for that. He was a strong proponent and supporter for getting the landscape manager, although it took longer than what he had wanted. We wound up getting that, and I think that's probably in our parks and just the floral arrangements and everything. I mean, that's just an outstanding tribute, I think, to someone. So, thank you so much for that.
I didn't know I did that. Thank you for this. Did you?
I was a very...
Give him a round of applause. Okay. What media is?
Um, yes. Mayor Protem and council, I just want to let you know that the City of Perry Downtown Development Authority is in the process of undergoing a master plan refresh, and we're working with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. So we're at the stage where we're getting community and citizen input on our downtown, things they like, reasons that they come downtown. We have a survey that will be going out on Friday. You know, we'll have that on social media. The Middle Georgia Regional Commission will also have a presence at our Food Truck Friday event at the City Tent, where they'll be actually interacting and face-to-face with the Tendies there to get their input on how to help Perry. So I just want to let you know.
Thank you so much. Chief Paul.
Nothing, sir.
Julie.
Nothing, sir. Sure. Thank you.
I recommend a lead service. Yes, coming aboard. You have a thing you want to say?
No, sir, no.
Thank you so much. For that.
Yes, I do. Mayor Protem and council and the public, I'm excited to announce that the Your City program has opened up its application window, and that will go until August nineteenth. Just real quick, if you're not familiar with it, it is a program that the city hosts. It is a free program to join, and you will go through all the different departments and learn a lot about them. It's very interactive. It's very fun, and you get dinner at every one of them. So if you're at all interested in understanding what goes on behind the scenes and what makes this job a lot of fun, but can be, can be difficult, and as I say, decisions have to be made sometimes, but you'll, I think, understand a whole lot more about what it is that they do here and we do here at the end of that. So, like I said, the application's out there. You can contact me. It's on the website. I've posted on Facebook. So there's a lot of different places you can find it, and the deadline to apply is August nineteenth, and the first one is September fifth. And it's only six sessions, and it's after work from five to seven-thirty. So we'd love to have anyone that's interested.
Ms. Turble, you have a thing?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Protem and council. As Ms. Harden mentioned, Food Truck Friday is going to be on Friday, August ninth, this Friday. We're expecting it to be a little on the warmer side, but there's going to be plenty of lemonade and beer and wine and shay rice and all sorts of fun treats to pull you off. The band is going to be somewhat local to Perry. It's Jettison Blue, so that has a mix of Perry and Macon members, and we're just excited for another awesome Food Truck Friday event.
Thank you. It would, yeah.
Nothing, friend, sir.
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
No, sir. Nothing.
It would.
No, sir. Thank you.
Ms. King?
Uh, no, nothing for the general public, but I would like to say thank you, Councilman Jackson, for your time and your efforts, and I will not be forgotten. Thanks for all your support.
Thank you so much. To the general public, if anyone, from the general public, can entertain one say?
I'll go to general public. I think we need to put some signs out for Food Friday about the dogs. We're having problems in that area. I'm not saying banned, and I'm just saying we need to ensure that we let folks know they have to clean up behind that dog.
Do you want to address that, or do you want me to? Pet waste stations will be installed downtown Friday morning, so hopefully that will help as well. They have signage on them, and then we'll also make the point to announce that at the event and make it very clear to the community and public as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Thank you so much.
I'd just have one clarification question if you don't mind. We also requested the use of the display of the vintage fire truck. Is that something to be approved for, or is that just something that the, with the department, fire department itself would offer the use of the display if we are able to acquire the courthouse parking lot?
Ms. King.
As long as it's just a static display, not involved in the event at all, that's okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any more people from the general public? I have my own at this time. Nothing else we can join.